Stands, "One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, and Liberty and Justice for All."
Okay. Next item on our agenda is a proclamation for Park and Recreation Month, so if Parks and Rec, Eddie Estes and the crew can come forward. You're going to be there. I'm glad we could do this proclamation because, you know, I don't know if most people realize, you know, Parks and Rec owns everything from the cemeteries to the animal shelters. So the span and control in my mind is absolutely amazing, and I'm not sure how many acres of parkland you have out there, but I've always felt like Parks and Rec has more land than J.R. Hewings. It's a pretty big deal. So if we could go ahead and read the proclamation.
Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Manhattan, Kansas. And every day, the people of Parks and Recreation provide essential services that make their communities better places to live, work, and play. Our Parks and Recreation Programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. Parks and Recreation Programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. Our Parks and Natural Recreation Areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now therefore, Mayor Butler, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, on behalf of its citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2021 as Parks and Recreation Month and encourage all citizens to become familiar with the parks, trails, facilities, programs, and services available to them.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Eddie Estes, the Director of Parks and Recreation. Got a good crew behind us. I'll introduce those in a minute, but first I want to read a couple stats. A recent National Recreation and Parks Association survey showed 93% of Americans think parks are beneficial to their mental health, citing benefits such as being outdoors in nature, getting exercise, and socializing with family and friends. Another recently released NRPA survey found 92% of Americans support their local governments investing in recreation opportunities, including parks, community centers, recreation centers, and senior centers. We all know that quality of life is a real benefit and a strength of Manhattan. The people with me here tonight are a big part of providing opportunities and enhancing that quality of life. Unfortunately, the last couple of years, you know, with some of our financial things, we've had some cutbacks. We've had to reduce some of our services. So again, 93% of Americans enjoy their parks. 92% of Americans feel it's important to support financially Parks and Recreation. So it is important for this community, quality of life, financially supporting Parks and Recreation, so we can continue to provide the services that are so important for this community. With me tonight, some people that are very critical, again, to provide the opportunities that you all enjoy in this town. Andy Har, Youth Sports. He's here tonight. He's probably leaving from right here, going back out to ballgames to manage in some ways tonight. Alfonso Leva is our park planner. He has a prod, he has an item on the agenda tonight to improve and enhance the trail here in City Park. Randy Clifford, New Recreation Centers. I don't know else we can say, except the community is certainly enjoying those tremendously. One is open, another will be opening soon. Casey Smithson, he's the tallest guy that we have, and that's probably good because he needs to have the broadest shoulders of managing all of our park, our trails, parking garage, parking lots, quite a variety of things, as well as supporting aquatics. Janelle Fritz, operations officer. She had to be here tonight because she's important to help keep all of us in line and going in the right directions. Customer service, very critical as we interact daily with the community in a wide variety, as the mayor was commenting on. Sidney Baker, aquatics. Nothing more important in the summertime in this community than aquatics. She does a great job managing excess, commonly of more than 100, goodness, kids, kids from 16 to 25 years old. Does a great job providing hundreds of thousands of opportunities for people to enjoy aquatics. Molly Mayberry, Arts and a Park, as well as Little Apple Day Camp. Critical things for this community during the summertime. If you haven't been to the Arts and Park yet this year, please get out. Great one last Friday with mus, with a, it was different, it really wasn't a concert, it was a musician?
He has a musician.
Yeah. Very well enjoyed. Please get out, support Arts and a Park. Scott Schumaker, we just call him Zoozar. AZA accredited zoo, something we're very proud of here in Manhattan, one of the, less than 300 across the nation.
Two forty.
Yeah, two forty across the nation. Very proud of the fact that we're able to gain the support of the community to have an AZA accredited zoo. So I thank all of you for what you do providing services for the community. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Appreciate everything. Okay. Park and Recreation Month. Okay, and this is the first meeting of the month, so it's open for general public comments. And I believe we had one person sign up to speak early, and that would be Chuck Seaton?
Sexton.
Sexton, I'm sorry.
You can call me E.
I, no, I messed up there. I'm having a little bit of problem with one of my eyes this week and can't read well.
E-I-O. Yeah, just to, you know, it's a great thing that this evening is actually Parks, you did the proclamation on Parks and Recreation, because that's one of the things we're going to talk, or I'm going to talk about just for a couple of minutes, maybe, unless I get the hook, but the main thing I wanted to do was thank you for the opportunity, one, to address you and to address the citizens of Manhattan, but mainly to thank the folks at the Sunset Cemetery that fall underneath Parks and Recreation. Now, I don't know if you, most, a lot of people in this town don't know what all is in that cemetery. Well, there's one section we took on as a project. I'm from Flynn Hills Veterans Coalition, and we represent about 100 or so veterans that are concerned within the Flynn Hills, and that's from multiple counties. But one of the things that we took on was, there was a 37-millimeter cannon at the cemetery, and it's in the Gold Star Mothers' Area. And what our membership decided to do was spruce it up, because it hadn't seen paint probably since about 1940-something. But the cannon's now, and next year is going to be eight, 80-years-old. And in that section, that Gold Star section, that the people at the cemetery maintained so well, with the exception of the cannon, is the help that they gave us to prepare and to allow our volunteers to go forward and to make it a more pleasing place. And as you can see, there's a, some of, that's the cannon right now, and there's a before and after. Now, the before is the one that's on your left, and that's the after. And that represents a cannon from 1942, and it's one of the few that actually were made, and we happen to have it here. So if you get a chance to go up there and see it, now, none of that could have happened without the support of the folks at the Sunset Cemetery. And that's Mike, Mike Moeller, Justin Archer, Cody Decker, Jeff Willard, and Gary Fleener. And what they did was support us in all our needs, specifically with water, with power needs, hoses, and so forth, to allow our volunteers to go in and make it a better thing for our community. And I don't know if you realize it, because most of, most of you haven't been outside of Manhattan, you've been here for quite a while, but having traveled for 30 years within the Army all over the world, I've gone to quite a few different Memorial Day ceremonies. And probably the best one, not probably, for sure the best one that I've seen is held here at Sunset Cemetery. And as a result of that, we decided to try to make that area a little better. There's the cannon. Still can't fire it, though. And let's see if I could. That's a darn shame. Yeah, next one. Technology. Now, the photograph is a, just a few of the volunteers that we had, but to the left are two people that are from groups that we don't often associate with the Flynn Hills Veterans Coalition. The, one gentleman is a guy named Staff Sergeant Sanchez, CJ Sanchez, and he's a soldier that's currently stationed at Fort Riley. And he volunteered a couple of Sundays to come out and help us clean off those crosses, get all the mildew off them and straighten them up. The young lady that's kneeling there is a gal named Fatima Jagori, and she's a K-State student who just also happens to be a veteran. So that's a pretty, pretty cool thing when we can involve not only the citizens of Manhattan, the, what we consider landowners or traditional citizens of Manhattan, but also those that are temporaries, or they're here just temporarily on a temporary basis. But they helped us quite a bit. And that, like I said, it's so cool that we were able to do a combined project with the Veterans Coalition, the students from K-State, as well as soldiers from Fort Riley, and with volunteers to come back whenever we need them. They, you know, they're volunteering to come back and help us whenever we need it, and that's a pretty cool thing. The other group there, the elder, elderly that are in that photograph are myself and Tony Nichols. And Tony was a big part of making sure that the cannon was painted properly, or the anti-tank gun was painted properly. But, you know, I just wanted to thank you for supporting us as well as you do as a coalition, and thank you as representatives of the City of Manhattan for allowing such good people, that's Archer, Decker, Willard, Moeller, and Fleener, to come out and help their citizens maintain the area so well. But subject to any questions you may have, once and again, a big thank you.
Chuck, I would just like to express my appreciation for that work. I was just at the cemetery about two weeks ago, and I looked at that poor cannon, and I asked somebody that was in the car, why, I mean, it doesn't look functional, it just is, you know, getting, just deteriorating over time. So whatever you did, I'm, I'll go see now and see, I'm sure there's a big difference, big difference.
Trust me, can't fire.
Well, I think if you express the city commission's appreciation for that work you've done too, I think we would all say that.
Well, I appreciate it on behalf of all the folks that are in the Flynn Hills Veterans Coalition, but, and the folks at K-State that helped out, and the folks at Fort Riley. But great project, and like I said, we're open to doing more of them to make the community even better. You know, we're doing a lot of things. I don't mean to take up too much time, but we're doing a lot of things, specifically the Veterans Tour, which Mayor Butler helped us with. We've got that automated now, so you can do it on yourself, on your phone, you can hook in and have it, have it as a, as a tour to see all the different veterans memorials here located in Manhattan. We're doing Vets on the Net podcast, and it's, you know, it's oral histories from veterans. Last one we had that came up was pretty cool. We had, had, oh, we had Dick Meyer. Dick Meyer from the President of Kansas State University, when he was cool, when he was Captain Meyer, as a fighter pilot in Vietnam, we had him talk about his experiences. And we had Tom Frye, that he talked about his experiences when he was cool as a captain, not later on when they're colonels, when they're, they don't, they're not cool anymore, but when they're actually doing cool stuff along with troops. But they talked about their experiences in Vietnam. We've had USO people that did tours. So it's kind of a neat experience, and that's all through the hard work of the veterans, as well as you folks for supporting us as well as you do. So that said, if anybody's got any questions, they want to know about the cannon, there's initials on it, the data plates on it, it was made in Battle Creek, Michigan, 1942, November, signed off on by A.B. Quentin. He's actually got his initials carved into the cannon. But we're open to more projects, and we've got willing hands, and all we need is the time and the funding, so, and we're soon able to take care of that, so. Anybody got anything else for me?
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate, appreciate that.
Not a problem, Colonel. Thank you.
Are there any other individuals that would like to speak on any topic? Sort of like Open Line Friday type thing, like they do on radios and stuff, so any topic. All right, seeing, seeing none, then we will move on to Commissioner comments, starting down here with Commissioner Ready.
Thank you. Thank you once again for telling us about all the improvements you've made. I think that speaks to our community very well, and on your own time, and very, very beautiful. I do want to say the July 4th celebrations were outstanding, since we all missed them last year, but I do enjoy the municipal band that the city has every, every Tuesday, and then for, for July 4th, again, something fabulous our community does, and there was at least 200 people watching it right along with us. We visited the RCPD Firearms and Training Range, again, something that our police department needs, and hopefully it's stellar enough that other communities and other departments also want to utilize it. I do appreciate the community's funding for it. The county did put up the funds for it, and it's, it's much needed, and it's been in the works for almost a decade, at least for as long as I can remember. If you're going to register to vote, you have until July 13th if you want to participate in the primary. The advanced voting starts July 14th. So if you've, if your last name has changed recently, or if your address has changed, make sure you check to see if you are still registered in Riley County if you're planning on voting for the primary. The last thing, you know, I think we have wonderful community, and Parks and Rec is a huge part of that, so I hope you take advantage of all the things they're offering. They have, I don't know who does the social media for Parks and Rec, but there's lots of activities going on in all of our rec centers right now, and in our pools for adults and children. So this is your community, please take advantage of it. Thank you.
Several of the things I would have said, Yusha has already, and you can tell she's a teacher. She teaches us. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate the Veterans Coalition fixing that cannon, and I know if you didn't have time to talk about it, but we've spoken about trying to restore the monuments that are in front of Pioneer Cabin. I know if any of you have walked over there, it looks like somebody vandalized them, but of course what happened was those cannons were melted down in the scrap iron drive in World War II. And so we've, we've got a group taking a look at that to see if maybe we can somehow restore that and put it back to like it was. So I'm looking forward to that as perhaps another project, and appreciate the effort on that. So, okay, we'll move on now to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the city commission. A commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the commission have any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items?
Just to say that the first, it's not first, actually. It is item C, which is accept the easements and rights of way on the final plat for the week's edition. Is that the right one?
Yep, week's edition.
That's not the one I'm after. Guess it is.
It is, yes.
Yeah. It's, but that's dividing two lots. Well. Um. I think I have a concern, and I'm going to be voting no on item 5C because of delinquent property taxes. So I just wanted to let you know.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes, I just want to speak to the Housing Market Analysis and Policy Strategy Study that the committee, committee, I'm not on the committee, but I believe, I believe Commissioner Morris was on it, going with development strategies. So we are moving forward with that, and a lot more to come as far as the services as we look at housing needs in our community, especially affordable housing needs. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to, I guess item F on here is, you know, the Total Reward Study, which is really the pay study, correct?
Correct.
And I know we talked about that before. I don't have a problem with us going forward with that, but, you know, there sort of was at one of the briefing sessions, the anticipation that if we voted for this, that then we would also be voting to approve the results of it, and that is not the case. Just want to make that clear, that I don't have a problem with the study, but I'm not so sure I'm going to be able to go along with the results of it. Have to see what comes out after that. So are there any public comments on the consent agenda items? Okay, seeing none, then we can ask for a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Okay, city clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse? Yes, accept on item C. My vote is no. Commissioner Hattasal?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero with the exception of item C, which carries four to one.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider vacating a portion of a utility easement at 4513 Grand Bluffs Circle. And the presenter is Ben Kearns, Public Works Management Assistant.
There we go. Okay, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Like you said, we're here to look at the request of a kid, utility easement at the address already mentioned. Quick history on this. This easement was part of the original, this utility easement was part of the original plating of the Grand Bluffs at Mill Point, Unit 3, back in 2013. The blue is the lot outline, and unfortunately, you can't see it here, but we'll see it better. The easement runs here. The applicant has requested this vacation in order to build a permitted structure. And this is showing Lot 22 and Lot 23. The applicant is the owner of both lots. Here's the property. Correction, here's the house, and then, as you can see, here is the easement, the utility easement that's in question. It is found all on Lot 22. No utilities are currently in the easements. All utilities have responded to the request to vacate the easement, and they've all supported this vacation. Before us is the possible motion so that the easement can be vacated. Any questions or concerns?
Are they, they're not asking to combine two lots into one lot or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
I think it seems simple enough, what they're trying to do. I move that the commission find that there are no private rights.
We need to have public comment.
Oh, good point.
Sorry, we'll get that in a minute. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this top, topic? Because we have a public hearing, and that public hearing period is now open. So if anyone wishes to speak on that, please come forward. Okay, doesn't look like there is, so we'll close the public hearing portion, and Commissioner Morris, you can give the motion.
I'm, thank you. I move that the commission find that no private rights will be injured or endangered by the proposed vacation, and that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience thereby, and approve, that we approve the first reading of an ordinance vacating a utility easement at 4513 Grand Bluffs Circle.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Morse? Yes. Commissioner Hattasal?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, next we'll move on to the general agenda, and item A is consider approving a resolution of intent to issue up to $8 million in industrial revenue bonds with Foundation Park Home Plus LLC for this construction of up to three 12-bed senior home plus facilities. And the presenter for this tonight is Jason Hilgers, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. We have a piece of Interlochen, which you all considered a rezoning of not too long ago. This would be the southern part of the Interlochen subdivision. It was adjacent to, this is an old aerial, I don't know why that, huh, anyway, across from hospice, there's a piece of property, the southern part of Interlochen, where you have this proposal to build these senior units. The applicant is here this evening, they can speak to you about the project, if you have details about the project. We typically have issued or received IRB applications from a lot of senior assisted living units in the past. Metalark, on numerous occasions, have issued and requested, and we've issued IRBs. More recently, Metalark approached us for some senior home units on Scenic Drive, out at the Stone Property. They converted that old homestead into a unit, which we issued IRBs. Stony Brook, we issued IRBs, as well as St. Joseph's Village. So we've got a history and a past here of accommodating this type of request. In this instance, they are not looking for anything by way of property tax exemption for any period of time. This is purely to leverage the sales tax exemption on the construction, which is fairly typical. We've issued IRBs for this, in this manner, for things across the community, including hotels and workout facilities, and universities, and hospitals. So again, traditionally, this has been a request that the commission has received and moved forward with. But again, yeah, the applicant is here this evening, if you have specific questions about their development, a lot of it was covered within the zoning action that the commission took, but they have made application for the issuance of IRBs. So that is your action this evening. We have, we're looking for a resolution of intent to issue up to that $8 million for the construction, construction of those three independent living senior care facilities. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the IRB side. Obviously, no risk to the city financially to do these. The sales tax exemption would just, from the city's perspective, if they were to purchase these goods in Manhattan, that would be the impact to us from a sales tax perspective. But quite, quite often, we see developers bringing in materials from other communities in Kansas where they can leverage that sales tax exemption as well. So we've had that discussion in here before, but the applicant may be able to give you some insights on where they plan to buy those materials as well. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to stand for those. I believe Brian Warren with the company is here to speak to you all this evening as well, if you have questions.
There was one, one question on when, when this is completed, will they be paying property tax, or are they going to be exempt from property tax?
And I will have the owner address that. The ones that I mentioned previously, I do believe, for the most part, do pay property taxes, with the exception of a couple in the community that have received legislature action that allows them to be exempt.
Yeah, I've had a similar question, if they were going to get state property tax exemptions also on this, and you said you don't know, right?
State property tax exemptions?
Right.
No, there are no property tax ex, from, from, from the city or the state? Are you talking the legislature?
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, they're not asking for it from us, but I'm saying, are they getting from anywhere else?
Yeah, they would have to answer that question. Yep.
So, yeah, that's one of my questions. And the other one is, I don't think this is, we do have a need for such type of housing here in the City of Manhattan. I think my biggest, I, I feel even though there's going to be 26 jobs in our community, they might just be going from one facility to another, and this is probably a question for you, but there was just one job that was going to be about $50,000, I'm sorry, $50 an hour, and the others were going to be about $15 an hour for CNAs and universal aids, and even the managers, about $19. So I'm not sure if those are new jobs. I feel more like they might just be shuffling around in our community. So that was my only thing. And is it from Wichita? Is this organization from Wichita, from Manhattan, or?
I believe they are from Wichita.
Okay.
Okay, can we go ahead and have the developer try, try to, you know, fill us in on some of these things? I see you're there. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go low-tech. The river just came out and, and take that up the offensive. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I'm Brian Warren, President of Foundation Properties. We're a Kansas corporation out of Wichita, Kansas. Although I did my first nursing home job here at College Hill Nursing Home in 1979. And we also have a facility close by, it's Valley View Senior Life in Junction City, we own that campus, and it is our intent to do, we have plans for two of these on that campus in Junction City also. But primarily, and then when we bought that facility, my wife and I, Kathy, moved up here and lived in Grandmere here, and we loved that space. We always thought it'd be great to come back and, and build here. And then one more thing about Parks and Rec, when we lived here in 82, we saw A Sleep at the Wheel at the Arts in the park, and it was one of the best concerts I've ever seen. Just a sidebar, so kudos to those folks. I'm going to speak a little bit about the building itself and our concept. I've been in the business for 42 years, and this last year and a half, as you well know, has taken us all time to sit back and rethink the evolution of nursing homes themselves. The average Kansas nursing home is 43 years old, and now the average assisted living is well over 20 years. So as you know, the technology and ideas have changed dramatically. It is our hope with our home plus called Foundation Park, we're going to have three small houses, there are 12 private suites in each. No long daunting hallways, no food cooked in the back of the building and brought up and served on a steam table. All of our food is cooked right up front, when they want it and what they want. We looked at what the fear of most seniors are, and there's two basic fears. One obviously is pulmonary issues, as evidenced by the COVID. Each one of our units has a freestanding, separate, two-zone split system that has ionization and kills up to 99% of all influenza and COVID. No shared room and exchange. We increased the air exchange in each one of the rooms to create negative pressure, and we'll have more air exchange in those rooms than you will in the average OR suite. That coupled with an above-ground storm shelter. We have a double vestibule entry. If somebody comes and visits in the flu season, it automatically detects their temperature. If they have a temperature, the door locks and they can't come in, they'll have to visit some other time. We also are taking care of every type of resident within the reason, we're licensed by the state of Kansas as a home plus. That allows us to have a small number, small footprint, and we call it family-style care. Our caregivers are going to be able to handle people, assisted living, independent, some limited memory care, and short-term skilled nursing care. We also have our own beauty shop, therapy tub, and PT area for people that want to come short-term stays. The way most nursing homes work now, the hospital sends you to one of the older nursing homes that don't have these amenities. We can offer that too, for people on short-term stays, for hip or those types of changes. I think we also, each suite has their own medicine delivery system. We have seal pack, and there are no carts out in the hallway. They come in and each resident has a locked room for their own meds, and that cuts down on med errors. We also took the, we're doing an above-ground tornado shelter in each one of our homes. So that's very helpful. All of these amenities with wraparound porters with great views of what we think is a great Colbert Hills, and that's where we are. We're very excited about bringing this concept. It is our hope to build the first two and the third. As far as the property taxes, and all, we believe to commit to our community, and we mean that by we pay our property taxes. We want to, we want you to be there when we need fire service, EMS services, roads, infrastructure, very important to us. I've never done a deal yet where you didn't pay our property taxes. Some of my non-for-profit operators and I argue about that, but that's just, that's a sidebar. In reference to the new jobs, we hope to have up to 25 new full-time equivalent jobs. Those ranges are going to be from a director up to $50,000, $60,000. Obviously, our RNs are going to be paid closer to $25. LPNs are going to be 20, 21, and our aides are going to be very competitive. We have to be competitive when we come into a market. Those are going to be new jobs to them. I'm not going to lie and say we're not going to glean some information and some talent from other buildings, but we think people want to try something new, revolutionary, and a viable alternative to the old nursing home model. When we started, I put my team together two years ago and said, you know, forget everything you thought about a nursing home, because we did. And this is our product, Foundation Park. We're really excited, and I'll entertain any questions. My mom said if you talk more yourself, five minutes, you need to shut up and sit down.
What's your target date to have the first building completed?
We're going to break ground this month, and it should be done right around November.
Of this year still?
Yes, that's our hope.
Okay.
And one other question on, I'm sorry, the sales tax abatement. We'd apply for that, and as you well know, our lumber costs have almost tripled. So we are hoping to take the, have that at least offset some of our lumber costs, and we're very thankful that we have that. We always try to use local, a lot of our contractors are local, and we do as much as we can lumber. We had to deal with one place, and that's Star Lumber out of Wichita, and we're keeping our fingers crossed on whether we can hold that for another few weeks. But the sales tax abatement allows us to offset some of those costs, and also our site, I don't know if you ever walked this site, it's, it's pretty aggressive. And we budgeted maybe $400,000 per site prep, it's closer to a million dollars, so. Cowboys don't cry, we know that, but we're anxious, that's a beautiful site, and our neighbors are going to be just fantastic.
I know that IRBs are developed for economic development, and I think that this is a good economic development project. I know that our community's adult care at all the ranges are usually full, so when someone has to go to a nursing home, or you have to wait. And so I know that these rooms will be needed, and it is a need we have here. And I like higher-paying jobs too, Usher, but I, I think overall, this is a good project.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any problem with the project itself. I think when I hear IRBs and sales tax exemptions or property tax exemptions these days, red flags go up for me because of the dark stores theory stuff that's happening.
Sure.
And a lot of our businesses, where we did give certain exemptions or incentives, are now going to get an additional bonus by not having to pay a certain amount of property tax.
Yeah, no, we're all in on the property tax.
So that's, that's one of my concerns. As far as the need in our community, I think we do have that huge need. I think any kind of surveys we've done, we saw two, two populations, one is the student population, and one is the senior population, which has a lot of different needs, but essential needs that aren't quite being met in our community. So I wish you all the best on this project.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, thanks, thanks for the briefing. Looks like an excellent, excellent project. I'm looking forward to see it getting completed.
You bet. Again, thank you for the opportunity to get our IRBs, it's very helpful.
I want to open the discussion up for public comment regarding this item. Has anyone in the audience wish to speak about this project? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment, and the commission doesn't have any further comments, we can entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 070621A, indicating the commission's intent to issue up to eight million in industrial revenue bonds for the construction of up to three 12-bed senior home plus facilities to release the Foundation Park Home Plus LLC.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, we'll move on to item B on the general agenda, which is the Manhattan Developmental Code, MDC, Articles 26-10, Definitions and Division, and 26-8E, Nonconformities Review Discussion. And Chad Bunger gets the pleasure of presenting this one tonight.
I do. Go Crow, all right. Sorry about that. Good evening, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Appreciate, again, the opportunity to share with you our work on the Manhattan Development We're real close to finishing all the articles up and all the topics overview. Tonight, we'll talk about really the last article, which is the least flashy, if you will, of the definitions, and then circling back and discussing nonconformities, because that's a fairly big topic of property rights, and how our development pattern occurs in Manhattan. So definition, Article 10, fairly straightforward, just a list of definitions in alphabetical order. However, we broke it up in a couple of different ways. The first one, 10A, goes over rules of construction and acronyms, so when the code says city, we mean city of Manhattan. And these are just examples, when we say applicant, developer, subdivider, et cetera. So really, summary of, of the words that we stayed over and over and over better defines them. We also have a special section for the measurements, because those are often reviewed when we look at plats and other subdivisions of what does that property line meet, or what property line does this match a definition, et cetera. So those are in their own special section. And then C through E, C, 10C is the general definitions of all the words, terms of art that we use with, throughout the development code. And then D, blanking on one. The other three, airport overlay, floodplain regulations, and the historic resources are separated out. Also, those three sets of regulations are often reviewed by state and federal regulators, and so it's easier to pull those out, so when we're audited, it's pretty straightforward to, will, will be straightforward to complete those. I will remind everyone that on the NcodePlus site, where these regulations will live online, you wouldn't really have to go back and look at these, or this article, in that when you see a word that you want to know what the definition is, it's highlighted, underlined, you can just hover over it, and that definition will pop up, or you could click it, and it'll bring it here. So far easier than our today's set of regulations, where you got to thumb through pages and pages of definitions. So that's that one, fairly straightforward, but it's an important definition, make sure we're all on the same page. Then moving on to Division 8E, nonconformities. We've discussed this topic for several, several times over the years, previous for us starting to develop a code, and then as we started developing these regulations. I wanted to start with just why we do zoning, and because that directly plays into nonconformities. We create zones to regulate where land and development, or what land could be used for development, what type of developments are there. In our community, over time, those goals and those land uses and regulations have changed to address development patterns that we want to see within the city, address health and safety issues that pop up, that we say, hey, we need to make a change to this regulation to better protect our community, or make it more attractive, et cetera. And so over time, since we've had zoning regulations since the 1920, since 1926, we have created nonconformities. Nonconformities, especially when you're talking about loose uses, are, did they comply? So, you know, they would be considered legally nonconforming, and have they continued since that time? Or were they established illegally? And I have, you know, a rough example in my presentation to explain this. Our goal through nonconforming, nonconforming regulations is really to get compliance through attrition over time, for one reason or another, of these legal nonconforming uses. Also, our goal should be for these illegal uses, is to address those and bring them into conformance, so we don't have illegal or unsafe uses hanging out there, which is a detriment really throughout our community. So this is an example, just East City Park here, a few blocks over. As you can see here, through the, the time of Manhattan, we've gone from single-family and two-family dwellings allowed through the 40s, and then we allowed apartment houses in the 40s through 60s, multifamily after that, then downgraded it, downzoned it to four-family, and then in 2015, we downzoned it even further to single-family. So through that life of our zoning regulations for this neighborhood, we went from only single-family, two-family, up to apartment buildings, back down to single-family. And if you drive through that neighborhood, you'll see that, well, you'll have apartment buildings right next door to single-family homes, or a single-family home that was originally built that way, and then later remodeled to add multiple dwellings in it. And so you could see here, as we change zonings up and down, how we create nonconformities. So I mentioned this as an issue throughout our community. Nonconformities, one way or another, impacts our neighbors to the property in a variety of ways, the investors that own either the, the nonconformity use, so it's a property right issue, as well as the neighbors surrounding it. Again, the, the property owner and their rights, and the tenants. And then we have internal stakeholders throughout building service, fire department, to make sure that we have safe homes that, that don't, don't give anybody surprises when we have to go address an emergency. Our county appraisers office is certainly interested in this, and then kind of similar to the fire department with RCPD and knowing what uses are, are at property. So we have a number of folks that, that are and should be interested in this topic. As I said, we've been talking about this for several years now, and through those discussions, we formulated these five guiding principles of sorts, revolving around protecting property rights of both the homeowners, as well as the neighbors, making sure we have safe, habitable structures and uses, and then working towards gaining conformity. And then the last one, I think, is pretty important there, that we, we try to address those illegal uses as best we can, and don't have those hanging out. So let me dive into here, some significant changes. Right now, today, when you ask for an opinion of legal nonconformity, we typically do those to address building permit requests for remodels or additions, change of use, or enforcement issues if someone's questioning, complaining about a property that has too many dwellings that per se, let's say, for the zoning district. We'll do opinion in nonconformities, and we look at the whole bucket of zoning regulations from when that use was first established. We try to go back and figure when that was. Oftentimes, that's challenging, as well as did the structure meet the setbacks, the height requirements, the lot coverage, the parking, all those things, and carry that forward all the way through the zoning change and after. That becomes extremely problematic when you're looking at nonconforming uses that are 50, 60, 80 years old. It's tough to establish those things, tough to figure out how staff interpreted things, tough to find building permits, tough to determine why is that building eight feet from the property line when the rules clearly said it need to be 14 or whatever. But we can, we have pretty good proof that the- But we could, we have pretty good proof that the, the use should have been there. So what we're proposing is decoupling those. We'll just look at the use and was it legally established? And I'll go through some examples here. And then we'll just look at the structure and not worry too much about how they interconnect. We are going to require nonconforming use, uses to be registered. We used to do a formal application process that was opened, open-ended pretty much to everybody that wanted it. It was extremely time-consuming. Honestly, they weren't the greatest application that we received. They weren't real complete. And so we stopped doing those for assurance purposes, if you, if you will, in two thousand eleven, and of just doing them for permits and enforcement. But we've heard through the years that those owners of those nonconforming uses really like to have that documentation so they could get financing, or the people buying those homes could get financing. Our idea here is that this registration would, would meet that need. We will go through an application process, and I'll explain it here, but that registration, or that registered property, nonconforming use is to meet that need. The trade-off, as we're proposing it, is that we're gonna go back to the old days of when nonconforming use or structure is damaged by any calamity, more than fifty percent of the fair market value, then we'll expect that property to be coming to compliance. In two thousand three, we changed that to, for residential uses that said, doesn't matter how it's damaged, it could be burnt to the ground or whatever, they could put that residential use back. And that's great for the property owner, and I understand why they, they would want to continue that. But it goes directly against what our comprehensive land use plans and our development policies are in that we, the community, through the comprehensive plan or other neighborhood studies, wanted those changes. So that, that neighborhood east of the city that I showed you there, we went through that public comprehensive plan. The land use plan says we should downzone that, and we have rezoned it that way. But we still have these nonconforming uses hanging out, and they really act like many spot zonings, because they for, with our current rules, can forever ever rebuild, regardless of what happened, unless they tore it down themselves. So it goes against our community's policies. So we're reinstating that, and we hope that we're finding some, some common ground. And then also, another carrot part of this registration is we're easing up on some of our standards in terms of being able to maintain, remodel, repair, and even in some limited spots, change uses pretty easy. And I'll go through those examples here in a minute. So I'll give you an example of the nonconforming uses. We would go through, so what the example here I have is this yellow building is a four-unit structure in an R1 district. We would require that structure to be registered. As we have it written today, and we still have some tweaks to do throughout, it would be an open registration where there wouldn't be a timeline, although we have discussed maybe putting a cap or a sunset date that says you have to register by such and said date. But as it is today, we, we don't have that in there. We would determine that registration based on the use only. Was it lawfully established to the zoning districts at that time? And has continued in that fashion sense? Once they register, as I said, they can maintain and repair up to that fifty percent threshold. We would allow them to address basic life safety issues that we don't really today. So if plumbing fails, electric fails, anything that would need a building permit, we would require them to not only get an opinion letter, but also go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a conditional use. So we're streamlining this to make it much easier. So if they want to put egress windows in or put new electrical panels, whatever, we're not going to make them do any effort other than registering so we can keep our homes and businesses safe. If you wanted to expand it, say, add another bathroom, add another bedroom to that residential use, they would need to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for conditional use. We have written in some requirements, especially non, excuse me, non-residential, so commercial or industrial, that you'll be able to switch over to similar or less intense commercial uses. So if it's a doctor's office today that's nonconforming to the district, and you'd like to put in an insurance office, you can do that through our zoning administrator's approval and not have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. But if you wanted to go from a doctor's office to a restaurant, then the Board of Zoning Appeals would be the route. And then again, if it's damaged beyond that fifty percent of the, the fair market value, we're going to require it to be brought into conformance, both non-residential and residential. So I kind of went through this. This kind of shows you a timeline and comparison here. So same example, we changed zoning in nineteen, the house is built in twenty-five, is a single-family home. We changed the rules in nineteen sixty-nine to allow for multifamily. That property owner took advantage of that and converted that house to four units. So I would say it's lawful, that occurred lawfully, and we would check to make sure it's contained, continued in that same manner. And then in two thousand three, we downzoned that area. We would call that nonconforming, and they would be able to get all those benefits of streamlined repairs and remodeling, life safety, those sort of things. Different example, same four units and a single family, but the facts change. Instead of a four-family or a multifamily district, we only change it to a two-family district. That owner decided to make a four unit out of it in seventy-one. We would say, no, you weren't allowed those four units. You can only get two, and that would be illegal. And the expectation is, and what we're proposing to do with this, is enforce that. And it very well could be that the original owner here in seventy-one that did the work is not the same person that owns it now, and that's unfortunate. And it probably changed hand multiple times. But I think we owe it to our community in a variety of ways to enforce these illegal uses. So that's what we're proposing. And that enforcement, like any enforcement we do with zoning, we'll send a letter to the property owner explaining the, the issue, requesting compliance. If we get compliance, we most likely will do it through an abatement agreement to formalize it. And there's a variety of ways we can get compliant, compliance. If not, then we'll go through the ticketing route and enforce it through the court system.
Chad?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Ready. How would you know? I think one of the conversations we've had in the past is if they're not registered right now, and you've already said they may have exchanged hands several times, what is their incentive for us to say, if you get registered? What is the incentive for that?
For an illegal use or just any?
Just for nonconforming units or establishments to get registered.
Right. So the, as we've developed this, I think the registration process benefits someone with a, a, a nonconforming use, not an illegal use, but something that
Right.
This scenario, let's see if I got back up here. Wrong way. This scenario. They get that documentation that they are reg, you know, they're registered. So if they need help with financing, you know, we've heard that is a huge hurdle within the city that lenders don't want to lend money to something that doesn't have paperwork on it. We would give that paperwork to say, yes, they can get, they can get financing. Or, or not that they should get financing, but yes, they are nonconforming and they have rights attached to it. They're allowed to repair it. They're allowed to get building permits for electrical and, and water heaters and plumbing and those trades things. And it's, we would eliminate all the hoops that we'd have now with these things.
And if it's illegal already?
If it's illegal.
There's no reason for them to register.
There really is not. We will probably hear about it through complaints. The neighbors complaining, like, much like we do today with overcrowding or, or other issues. So will I say, this, this is not designed to go out and catch illegal folks. It's really designed to support and prop up the legal, the nonconforming uses is how we've designed it. We know we, we won't catch outright the illegal uses. We'll probably stumble upon them one way or another through the rental registration, someone going through our registration with the little, uh, nonconforming uses, not recognizing what they have on hand, which would be unfortunate. But we try to create it so it's streamlined, or, or it eliminates a lot of hurdles that we have today with nonconforming uses.
I look forward to the feedback when you take it back to all of those units. Thank you.
So that's the use side of stuff. That is the, the part that is the most challenging through and through. I've been doing this for fourteen years. I do one or two of these things every year. In the heydays before two thousand eleven, I was probably doing five to ten of these every year. Not one has ever been the same, not one has been smooth sailing, clear rubber stamp it. They've always posed challenges. The structures are far easier, and, and we are recognizing that and actually making it just simpler, recognizing that these homes are part of the fabric of our community, or homes and businesses, I should say, these structures. And especially a lot of them that have been around for decades, or maybe even before we had zoning, us trying to enforce them doesn't do anything. We're not going to get it done. So we're not going to have any registration process with this. Generally, you can remain as is with that nonconforming home. So this lot here, the dash lines or the front yard setbacks that would have a, you know, a twelve-foot front yard setback, and this house encroaches in it as well as this detached structure. Be able to remain tho, maintain those, so re-side those, do all those good things, new windows. Obviously, we're not going to enforce this and have someone tear off half their home. They could go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get exceptions, to bring those in conformance. But we're just recognizing that, that we'll just forgive these type of things. You would be able to expand or add on, as long as it doesn't increase to the degree of nonconformity, such as this example, so it's behind this front yard setback. We're assuming it doesn't exceed the lot coverage, so those can exist. However, this building expansion of this detached garage wouldn't be allowed by right because you're encroaching into this setback. Although, again, you can go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to seek an exception. And then, again, addressing unsafe issues. So if, say, there's a basement apartment here or a ba, basement bedroom, we would allow those egress windows, those sort of things by right. Wouldn't have to jump any, through any hoops. So that is the structure side. Lots are another one. They are what they are. This one's just right next door to us. This is City Hall and the City Hall parking lot, an extremely small lot. It's definitely nonconforming. But again, not, no registration, can remain as is. You can even add on and rebuild within, you know, certain parameters are spelled out in that section to allow the homes and structures that we have on those properties, those smaller properties. The last item here, site development. So we're talking landscape, screening, parking lot pavement, signs. Those are obviously far easier to bring in conformance, less expensive than moving a house, generally speaking, those sort of things. So those can remain until you hit some of these thresholds where you're going to add on thirty percent or more of the house. The remodel or construction of a business or a building exceeds fifty percent, then we're going to want that pavement for the parking or the landscaping installed, or whatever that may be. Or if we're going from one type of nonresidential use to a more intense resident, or nonresidential use, so insurance agent to a restaurant, more intense, we'd want you to bring everything into conformance there with these site improvements. Other piece when dealing with nonconformities is trying to figure out abandonment or discontinuance. Our current section, I still can't read it. I always have to call to the city attorney's office and have them help me interpret it. It confuses me each and every time I read through it. So we've cleaned it up and simplified it to spell out these six items to, to define when a nonconforming use is considered abandoned. And then with that, we would require conformance for whatever that may be. So that's the last slide I have on, on nonconformities. I don't know if you have any questions of me. As I think Commissioner Ready said, we are taking this stuff out onto the road and, and discussing these items to different groups. And when it's appropriate, the builders, the, the realtors, we are talking about these items, so.
I, I do have a question.
Yes.
I mean, I, I appreciate the need to do this and hopefully simplify it because it is complicated and it's practically impossible for someone sitting at home scrolling through all the rules to try to figure something out.
Yeah.
So it's a, a good move. I, that east of City Park was an exchange because the development community and the city was interested in upzoning the area east of campus, and we're now seeing those large apartment buildings. And in exchange, we downzoned this area east of City Park in order to, there was a determination, I think, by the staff that about fifty percent of the homes were owner occupied.
Right.
And that was something we wanted to maintain or improve and not have more deterioration in that area because it was close to City Park and area between downtown and City Park. So that was a nonconforming kind of thing. But it, it, I think it's worked well, and I think the quality of those housing, houses are improving slowly. It takes a while. Once an area has deteriorated and the stock gets older, it takes a while for people to move in and fix it up.
Yep. And that's a good example of that policy change. We did those upzone one area, downzone because there was, that neighborhood recognized that they were more owner occupied and was primed to, to improve that. But there are certainly a lot of nonconforming uses there.
Yeah.
And our current regulations allow them to remain. And if they burn down, they can go right back the way they were for a fourplex or whatever it is. And so we'll never fully be able to recognize those policy visions for that neighborhood. And so that's been the shift to this proposal.
I'll be anxious to see if these changes cause any deterioration and hopefully improve some of the house, the older housing that we have. Because by allowing these nonconformities and illegalities, we're just perpetuating that less of a standard each time we do it. I, I do appreciate the need with regard to repairs and rehabilitation. That's important to try to get the properties improved. And the idea of registering the nonconformities, I would support that as a way to track them. It's right now, I'm not, I mean, look at the research you have to go into as a staff on each property. Go back to building permits in the nineteen twenties and try, or get the, that person to go to the neighbors and see if anybody's been alive that long.
Right.
Those are all some of the research that ends up being done. How will you keep track of these registrations? Are you going to use that database that the rental registration uses?
Yeah, we're, we're still trying to figure that out.
Yeah.
We'll still have to do a lot of that research that you mentioned.
No, I agree, yeah.
But the registration, we're, we're, we have a, a project in this year's capital improvement plan where we'll hire risk reduction, same consultant, to build us a similar database. We'll use that database for the rental registration
Yeah.
to inform people.
Is it working now? Is it, is it working now?
The rental registration?
Yeah.
That's out of my, out of my lane, so you'll have to talk with Chief French and his staff. But we'll use that registration to inform owners and property managers of these regulations.
I just hope that you maintain it and so that your system will work.
Yeah.
And I do, there's an example in my neighborhood. I live in Northview on Knox Lane. The Countryside Mobile Home Court had a, a nice big open space. And that was a playground and just green space. And it's hard to say it wasn't used, but it, you know, wasn't maintained well.
Right.
It was mowed, I suppose, but. And then more recently, like a year, a year and a half ago, there were new owners. And that, that space became and has become a kind of a storage yard for old concrete and sand, loads of sand. It is more of an industrial looking place now. And to me, that isn't what, and, and evidently you cannot find the PUD records for that anywhere. And, but it is not what was intended in that mobile home residential area. And I understand the Northeast Park is kind of really close. And it's 80 acres or 78 acres. And so you, you could make the argument that it's not as needed as it once was when there was no other green space. But that is not the intention of, and I, just like somebody on the staff, you know, it's an indic, it's an example of what can happen when nobody's paying attention.
Sure.
Can't find the records, that they just start using it for, in essence, I would call it an illegal use.
I would agree to that. I mean, I don't know the facts, but as you describe it, we'll have to look into it. I don't think this, that would fall into this section. It probably applies to different sections. We'll have to take a look.
I don't expect you to do any at the moment, but I'm just bringing it
Sure.
as an example of what happens, a deterioration that happens. And when, when the records can't be found and, oh yeah, you can do it because there's, there's nothing that says that you can't and what the intent, original intention was. I think if they can find it for one mobile home court, but not the other is how I understood it, so. But I, those are the kinds of things that happen that we need to be paying attention to, too. As well, you know, the housing, we even have a study that we're going to be paying for here soon to look at the housing in this community. And there hasn't been one for, isn't it 20 years? We haven't had one. And so that's going to be important for us that we have a marker here about what the housing conditions. And I know it's talking marketing and all these, but it's still a marker for what the condition of the housing is. And so we know that older neighborhoods deteriorate and they, you have to make an effort to keep them up, so. But I appreciate the efforts of the city with regard to the Community Development Block Grant money is to help someone who is low income, bring their property or fix some particular feature of it. And so I want this to work.
Good, thank you.
And I know you do too. You've invested, you, the whole community development staff has invested a lot in this, a couple of years actually. And so now it's time to move forward. So anyway, thank you.
Yeah, it's probably going to take 10 to 20 years to get a good idea of how, how well it's going, but yeah. My, my question back on the, let's go back to the East City Park area for example. If you've got a, a house that's been chopped up into four units and stuff and you, you said you'd hope to kind of eliminate some of that stuff through attrition.
Right.
Attrition means fire, tornado. In the old days, you could tear it down and build something new, but you could only tear down and build another single family house at that point. So that's probably financially, someone's going to lose their shirt on that deal probably. So, so what else, what other ways of attrition would there be besides, you have natural disasters and fires? Any ideas?
I, those are the big ones, although I wouldn't discredit the remodeling to a single family home or building new. I think on the, the west side of City Park, we're seeing that, we have seen that ever since we downzoned that area. It's an attractive area for a variety of reasons. And so people are willing to, you know, invest money into those homes to remove a three unit that maybe was in rough shape, buy it at the right spot, remodel it to a super great dream home in a great location. So I wouldn't discredit that, that way of attrition. And, you know, I'd like to think that this process, especially that 50% threshold, makes that a little bit more realistic. You know, if I'm sitting on a four unit that I get X dollars and I know I will always, always, always get that unless I decide to sell, that brings that price up. And I don't want to make anybody lose money on their investment properties, but by putting that threshold, we, we make it so our community realizes its development goals that we created with the future land use map and our comprehensive plan. And, you know, those things are going to hit their lifespan and that owner's going to say, you know what? I'll, I'll sell it for the right price to that home, a single family homeowner. But if it's an investment property that can always be that way with that 100%, then it's tougher to get those, those neighborhoods to convert through time, through attrition to, to meet our development goals.
Well, and, and at least you've got no specials by that point there.
Yep.
Compared to some of the newer neighborhoods, even the less expensive newer neighborhoods are still going to have a few thousand dollars or minimum on, on specials that you won't have down there.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, I think Chad, one of your notes in your document, you said there was approximately 500 properties in the city that do not conform with current zoning district classification. And of those 500, about 200 properties could possibly be illegal. So that's something that we're already approximating. And maybe we can't do much with the illegal ones as far as getting them registered because there's really not an incentive. And maybe we can get the other 200 or 300 to get registered with some type of leverage that works for them. I think the biggest challenge for all of us has been locating those owners that have all of that to do it. Otherwise, it's left in property management or some college student taking care of something and it just happens to be the case. But ultimately, these codes hopefully will help prevent those types of future nonconformities. And maybe we can document them much better as we move forward. So that 10, 20, 30 years from now, when they start looking at it, there's really a lot of verbiage and documents and registration pieces, whatever it is, that, that lays out our efforts to curtail the nonconformities and the illegal buildups that we have in our community. Because we're not going through all these comprehensive plans and master plans and design plans so that there can be little pockets of people doing whatever they want.
Right, right.
So how you keep track of that so that that doesn't die, that database doesn't die is going to be up to us keeping up with technology. But also giving these property owners some type of a reason to get registered.
Yeah.
And to come into compliance or make sure they're not in the illegal part of it and be more in the nonconforming part of it. I think this is a lot of work and I think most of these things we're already doing, such as the discontinuance. I think a lot of those things we still follow, but.
We, we've cleaned that section up a great deal, so it, it's pretty straightforward. The, the regulations we have now is, I find it tough to, to figure out and wade through. We got great attorneys on staff that can help us, but, but these are going to be a lot, we hope, use simple language to get this figured out. So.
Well, we've had pockets of property that came to us where we had to vacate them or something where they were abandoned
Yeah.
after lots of efforts from our staff and time trying to get them to where they can do something about it.
Yep.
So I think that piece we can still work with. But the, like I said, I hope to hear a lot more feedback from the community of individuals that are property owners that may speak more to these nonconformity pieces that you have laid out. I think that's been the most contentious piece that we've ever came across. So thank you for all your work. I appreciate it.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
You're not on your mind?
Yeah. Jared's work.
Oh, hello.
Thanks. The nonconforming uses, I think there's a tendency to lean into, we want to have conformity, but there's also very important times when there's a need for nonconforming use, right? Like in, I, one example is in the situation that we had two years ago, I guess, or sometime in, yeah, it must have been two years ago. The, like a Hezekiah house, right, that has a, that was a situation where there was multiple, too many, there was more than enough. It was a, a single family home, but there was six bedrooms. There were six different people that were staying in there in a way to transition into the workforce.
Oh, uh-huh.
But that didn't fit the
Yeah.
conforming neighborhood.
Yep.
How would that work? Is there, what kind of mechanisms are in place for, we've talked about intentional community. Maybe if you're talking about young professionals wanting to go house, you're going to have that situation in, in certain single family neighborhoods where you have four or five people and a home that is maybe under that threshold or zoned that way. So we're talking about the five-person rule kind of.
Uh-huh.
Talking about different uses in nonconformity and I don't know if that is, I, I try to fit it in every section, so.
I like it. No, it's good. So on the example you give, refresh my memory, that was a new property that they were proposing to develop, create, renovate the building and they had to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals for a couple of items, correct?
Wasn't it an old property?
Right, it was an existing home that they tried to remember.
Existing home, they, it didn't have, it didn't have the adequate parking.
Right, okay. So, couple of things, if it was a new use, we've expanded some of our uses in districts. The example, I don't know if it's this one or if it's another one that's popped in my head, transitional housing.
Right.
We have created a set of regulations to allow those to occur. An applicant proposed that. I don't know if it would have worked on that site because it didn't have enough lot area and that was its major hurdle primarily. But we've created a set of regulations to allow those in a number of residential districts. So it wouldn't be, that example wouldn't be a nonconforming use. But if it was something existing, we changed the rules around it and it still exists, then that would fall with, as a, as a nonconforming use. But to address that example, we've written in some standards to say, if you do these things, enough lot area, this maximum of these bedrooms, no parking, no, you know, not the right amount of parking, this, this, this. Go do it. It'd be allowed as a limited use in most residential districts. In terms of some of those more exotic, if you want to put it that way, housing units with communal living, those sort of things. I think they're a cool idea. I've read some books on them and seen some examples across the community. We have not incorporated those into these sets of regulations, A through Z. And those are going to be some pretty big discussions for our community to wrap itself around with how many people should be considered in, into a housing unit, be it a family. As we traditionally define it now, if we change our, our definitions to where we have family, like we know, and then these housing units. I think changing that number from four to whatever number or process to allow someone to expand that, that housing unit is not a bad idea. There's certainly ways we can accommodate that, but that'll be a big shift for a lot of neighborhoods. And quite frankly, a big enough shift that would cause enough commentary that it would derail what we've been doing for the last four years. So I'm, I'm all for exploring it. I think it's a great idea for a housing issues that I'd like to maybe for us to discuss through the housing study that the commissioner just mentioned. And let, let us explore those different housing models that we don't traditionally see in Manhattan, but we've seen in other communities and I think they could work really well here. They're just such a big topic and we're at this point in this project that it'd blow it up for another four years, I, I fear. But I, I'm all for it and I think we should discuss it. So, yeah. We, the family discussion is within Article 10.
Yes.
That, that is defined there.
The definition.
In the definitions. It would live in Article, in 10C.
It, it brings in use in construction into the terminology of family.
Right.
Like, so that's the.
Yeah, and.
That's the, that's the, the crux of what that, what those mean to different people at this time to what it meant in the early 1900s when it started to be used.
Right.
That's when they called it a boarding house.
Well, there was, there was a family and there was a boarding house, right? So those were the two.
And they're different.
They are. And they, they kind of acted oddly together back in the day and, and they've ebbed and flowed and come in and out of favor. And I think there's some really great housing models out there that other communities are using across the country that we should explore. And, and what we're doing in the development code is not etched in stone. So if we go through the housing study and say, these things would work really well here in Manhattan, but this regulation's chain is prohibiting it, I say change the regulations to make those things happen if the community says they'll work. I by no means do think that this stuff's set forever. But I think that some of those discussions would blow up in the community and we'd be at this thing for another four years. And I don't know if my heart can take it. I already got a defibrillator. I don't want two more of them, so.
I appreciate that and I'm going to continue to, to ask.
Yep.
But I think it would be, it would be great to have that, that discussion to follow the passage of this in that schedule. And I, I'm talking, I, I think you have time probably even early next year to, to get that if, if this goes through. I don't want it to derail. I know you've done a lot of work, but it, it ties into a lot of the future of, of how we could shape with the strategic plan in housing and, and different parts of the community with young professionals and the way we live these days.
Yep. Oh, I fully agree. I fully agree. Kind of on that topic, I'll segue here and then circle back to see if anybody else. So we're wrapping up and starting Thursday and then would like to meet back with you next Tuesday. Get a list of your issues, big and small. So I would really like to see that on your list if you want to give it to me and others. And we'll compile these lists and then spend the next month or so thinking about them, addressing them and trying to get to it. So I think that's a good segue. That's an important thing for you. Put it on that list. Let's talk about it. That's probably one I'll push back a little bit and say, hey, this is a big, big community topic. Can we talk about it in six months, not in three, and get it figured out? But those are important and we should see that on that list. So, and then, you know, any typos, broken links, anything you see that's part of the minutia, we'd like to have comments by the 23rd. And then we will circle back in August to you, the city commission, as well as the ordinance advisory committee with all the comments we've heard. Stakeholders, the planning board, share that with everybody and then work on final edits and those sort of things. And then hopefully wrap this sucker up in November and put it to bed and then move on to other things. Like the housing study and, and those sort of stuff, so. Okay, so back to any comments or questions.
I would just say that I'm glad that we won't be dealing with that more than five in a dwelling unit. Because I think the larger community has to get involved in that discussion and they aren't engaged here.
Right.
This is summer. They're not, I mean, there's so many people not even paying attention. And I can tell you, my, my block is half rental and half owners. And we have, occasionally we have one of the rentals with five cars and loud noise music and just is not a good experience. And boy, are we glad when they move out. And, you know, there's one, I mean, I, you know where they are. You, you can tell these old, old buildings that are not maintained well, some of the big ones around the community that are, there's one just east of City Hall here on. that are not maintained well, and some of the big ones around the community that are, uh, there's one just east of City Hall here on, must be the Mc Street South, Houston, in the mid-block, there are eight mailboxes on that uh ha- it's a big old house.
Mm-hmm.
But um, and the trash spills out into the alley at least weekly, and I mean, there are things like that that are not being tended to.
Sure.
And uh, so th- those are um, go over the edge for, for me.
Well, I think the, the main thing, you know, years ago, we, we argued about this uh legal conforming, illegal, non-conforming, and I think uh this is gonna address the problem that I heard from uh people that were concerned about, about getting documentation from banks and loans and things like that, so, so be able to take care of, we got a process in place now to, to take care of a little bit over half of the ones that have problems, the illegal is gonna be legal, and, and you know, we're just not be able to address that, but at least uh a property owner that has that now can see clearly that, you know, he's outside the lines, and he's gonna have to figure out how to get in the lines, and then those that uh have got a legal non-conforming, have got a process for getting the paperwork that they need.
Mm-hmm.
So, so to me, that's the, that's the big win on this, and then arguing the occupancy of an R-one house, I agree. Uh, that's a tough one, and we probably just ought to punt that one down for a few months.
Yeah, and I don't wanna punt it too far down, um, I think the housing study is a great time to discuss it. Um, it just scares me if we just fold it into this, so.
And I did put a comment on my list a- about that, because I know some of the uh property owners, you know, their, their argument was, well, if it's got five bedrooms, why can't I rent each bedroom?
Sure.
And of course, if it's an R-one area, I agree with Commissioner Morris, I don't like that, if it's in an R-three, maybe. I, you know, because, because it's higher density, so that's one of those things. So do we have any public comment on this particular topic tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and as this was just a discussion item, we will not be doing a motion or voting on it. So we will move on to the next item, which is Water and Sewer Master Plan Update Project Draft Report, and this again is a discussion item, and I think Randy is in charge of uh presenting that one.
Okay, uh, good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, uh, thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. Uh, so I'm gonna be just giving you a, a little synopsis of this uh project and, and some background, and then I'm gonna turn it over to uh our consultant, Olson, Olson Associates. So uh, tonight with me, I'm having uh Ben Day uh with Olson to, to present this uh, this study to you. Um, Ben's out of the Olson's Lincoln, Nebraska office. Uh, he has uh helped us with the design and construction of several million dollars in, in wastewater infrastructure over the years. Uh, he and his, he and his staff have done a, a really, really good job on this project. Uh, this project started about a year ago in May of twenty twenty. I need to do anything with that, Jerry?
Okay. Uh, we were meeting this afternoon to go over this presentation, and we commented that this is actually the first time we've been in person to, to meet for this project, so uh it's, it's uh been a challenge, and also I think it's kinda make things go a little smoother, but uh typically with this kind of project, it's a, it's a one and a half, two-year-long project to, to do a study of this effort. Um, typically, we're doing uh several eight-hour day work sessions or workshops for, you know, three or four days, a lot of stakeholder meetings, et cetera, uh, we didn't have the opportunity to do that, so. Um, like I said, it was, it was a challenge, but uh here we are, a little more than a year later. Uh, this is really just a uh, a review point now that we have this draft uh update plan report. Um, you know, we're, we're approaching the finish line, but we're not there, we can see it. Uh, we've still got a, a little bit of work to do to wrap it up and come back later with adoption. Um, there's a lot of work by city staff to, to start looking at almost sixty million dollars in improvements for the next twenty-year planning period, so. Uh, the previous master plan update for the water and sewer systems was done in two thousand and three. Uh, that was another fifteen to twenty-year plan. Uh, lots changed since two thousand and three, obviously, uh, so several years ago, we started the process of programming the next study in the CIP uh for this upcoming fifteen to twenty-year period. Uh, this is also on the heels of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Water and Wastewater Facilities Plan Update, which I think probably three of you were here uh when we presented that. Uh, that's obviously a, a, a water treatment facility, a wastewater treatment facility study, whereas this is really looking at the collection system on the sewer side, distribution system on the water side. Um, one of the key components of that facilities plan was water treatment a- and, and how we can grow and expand that facility. Uh, one of the recommendations that came out of that was to expand the existing facility. Now, that's probably hopefully fifteen years down the road, but uh the other option was looking at a, a, another facility somewhere else in the ci- city. Um, and maybe around the airport is where we were looking at that time, but ultimately, we decided uh we're best suited to continue to grow our existing facility. Uh, and with that came uh kind of a fifty-thousand-foot view recommendation to also increase and improve our ability to uh have transmission mains to carry water from that facility to our, to our storage towers, and also a general recommendation for another three million gallons or so of, of storage in our system. Um, you know, one of the things that the uh previous master plan update didn't really do is focus on storage needs within the existing system, it looked at uh expansion into new growth areas like Blue Township, and at that time, the Gateway Corridor, which is the area between the city and I seventy along US one seventy-seven, which never really came to fruition, but um, you know, surprisingly, like I said, it didn't really talk about storage needs inside the city, and that's one of the primary scope items on the water side of this study, and that's just, just one of the main topics that, that Ben's gonna review with you guys, so. Um, you know, with that, I'm just gonna reiterate, this is, this is just a review, a discussion, we got a lot of work still to do. Uh, Ben's gonna talk about where we've been, uh what we've done, and also a little bit about what we still have left to do, so. Uh, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ben, he's gonna introduce some of the other staff that have been working on this with us. Um, and so, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Randy, so as we go through this, I think Randy will chime in if I forget something. Um, I do want to uh recognize some other staff that are here, Mark Botchamp out of the Manhattan office, I'm sure a lot of you know him. I've got Molly Pesh, our water lead out of our Kent City North office, John Hofflander, who helped me manage this project. In the front, I got, got two uh really smart, young engineers that did a lot of the work, so they're also available to help out with answering questions. Michelle King did a lot of the work on the water uh model and evaluation, and Nolan Groff did a lot of the work on the sanitary sewer. Uh, I also wanted to acknowledge city staff, a lot of hours go into this project on the city staff, um, you know, uh collecting data, reviewing stuff with us, reviewing reports. We did have a lot of meetings, even though they were not in person, um, we had a lot of workshops and meetings virtually, so um they should be acknowledged uh for their hard work on this project as well. And then finally, we do have a teaming partner, Black and Beach, they're out of Kansas City. Um, they did some of the, the work as well, and we have a meeting with them here tomorrow to uh kick off another little phase of this project that I will talk about later. So the presentation outline basically follows the table contents of the report, uh, I know there's a lot of information there, you probably haven't had a chance to digest it all, but um we're gonna kind of follow the, the report, talk about the purpose of the project, the scope of the study, and then hit on each uh main component of the distribution and collection systems. So uh, three main purposes for this project, we needed to identify existing and future needs in the water distribution system and, and the sanitary sewer collection systems. Uh, there are some uh regulatory uh standards that we needed to help the city meet. One of them was developing a standard for valve inspection and op- operation program as required by KDHE. And then um there's a act called America's Water Infrastructure Act, also known as AWIYA, required by the EPA, and the city had deadlines to comply with that act. There's two other uh components of the project that um due to the budget and the CIP, we, we did not accomplish yet. I'm sure the city will be moving towards getting those as complete as well as soon as they can. One is an asset management system, and the other one is a water distribution main replacement program. So the scope of the project, again, um Randy alluded to this, uh evaluate the city's water distribution and storage systems, evaluate select areas in town for sewer collection improvements, um review uh the sewer inspection data the city had, and make recommendations for a uh, I guess, a replacement or rehab program on the sewer system, and then take all those projects and recommendations and uh combine it into a capital improvement program. And then, you know, we will touch slightly on the valve exercise program, and um I, I did, again, want to mention, we assisted with compliance with AWIYA, so th- those are the main scope items for the project, and now we're gonna move into each um component. So the first one is water distribution and storage, again, this is something that Michelle worked on. Uh, when we start moving into this type of an evaluation, the first thing we need to do is uh, you know, determine what's, what's the community gonna look like twenty years down the road. Uh, so that starts with population projection, how's the city gonna grow? Um, so we went ahead and projected population, we pretty much mimic the comprehensive development plan, we wanna make sure the documents are parallel with these types of uh growth projections. So we reviewed historical data, projected it uh forward, and then made sure we were close to the comp plan, which I think we, we matched pretty well. Beyond population growth, we need to project how um, how much water we're gonna need in the future, so. You know, direct correlation of population growth is increased water demands. One thing to note, you can see the, these peaks and valleys here, this is uh our, this is the historical data from the city over the last twenty years, and um you can see if you average out those demands, there's a kind of a declining line here. That means that over the recent years, the water demand has decreased on average, even though population has increased. This is a direct result of water conservation efforts, plumbing fixtures and those sorts of things. Uh, I wanted to note, though, at some point in time, population increase will outpace um some of the declining water demand, and our water demands will start increasing again. So at, at some point in time, all the fixtures uh will be switched out, or most of them, and then the new plumbing codes, you know, will have an impact, and you'll start to see population um drive water demands. So we looked at population growth, we looked at demand growth, the next step is where is that demand gonna occur within the system? Um, you'll see the, the city corporate limits are outlined in black, this black line. Um, the different colors represent the different pressure zones within the distribution system, and you can see we have some colored areas outside of uh the corporate limits. Those uh areas are, you know, Blue Township, the area out by the airport. We wanted to make sure we captured those um high potential growth areas and appropriately placed demands in those systems. So one of the efforts of this, this evaluation was to take the water, the water systems uh water model, so we have a computerized software uh system that uh rep- represents the water system within the city. And it'd been a while since um the GIS system had been correlated with the water uh model, so Michelle did that, we made sure all the mains were in there appropriately, any improvements that were made since the last model update, we updated the model to uh show those uh transmission mains, distribution mains. And then uh we went out in the field, or she said, Michelle did, uh she flow tested twenty-seven different locations, fire hydrant locations, and took that y- back into the office and uh calibrated the model. So right now, the model mimics field conditions, uh it's, it's very well calibrated. So the next thing to do is uh look at how, you know, use that model then to project future needs in the system. Okay, so when we look at the distribution of storage requirements, uh there was a few evaluation criteria we followed. So industry uh standard is to have enough water uh within each pressure zone to meet average day demands. If you have a power outage, outage, you can't pump or treat water, you've got a day's worth of water demand in each pressure zone. This is an AWWA, American Water Works Association standard. Um, in addition to that, fire flow capacities are very important for life and safety protection, and we also wanted to look at typical operation, operating pressures and uh looking at the pump stations. We wanna make sure the pump stations have capacity to serve each zone. Looking at fire protection, there's two requirements we looked at, one is the city has a standard of providing fifteen hundred gallons a minute of fire flow um throughout the, the residential areas. In addition to that, uh KDHE has a requirement that you can't drop below twenty PSI in pressure for any given condition. So those, those two things coupled uh result in our fire um stor- or sorry, our fire flow analysis in the model. Here's two uh screen clips of the model, the red node, the red dot represents a pressure that dropped below twenty PSI when fifteen hundred gallons a minute was applied to the distribution system. So in total, we found eleven areas where we needed to recommend waterline improvements to meet those fire flow requirements. Uh, from there, Michelle would put in upsized mains or looped mains and come up with the best solution to serve the area to maintain that um required fire flow. Moving on to some of the criteria, pressure analysis results, we wanted to make sure we had at least forty PSI uh pounds per square inch of pressure throughout the system, and that we didn't want to exceed a hundred and ten PSI. Uh, just note, there's plumbing codes that require any location, uh home or building that saw pressures at a hundred and ten PSI to install a pressure-reducing valve. So we're not real concerned about a few locations we found with uh high pressures, because we know the plumbing uh dictates how that's handled, but we, we recommend just to monitor, monitor those situations, especially as things develop and, and pump stations are uh upsized, so we don't uh, you know, increase the number of those locations. When talking about the low pressure, the forty PSI, this occurred in your Sunset tank, which is pretty typical, um that you'll have your lowest pressures right adjacent to your, your storage, so we're not worried about that either. We did look at pump capacity, uh suction and discharge piping from the pump stations. Um, I've listed Northwest Booster Pump Station, Stag Hill and Sunset Pump Stations, those all have recommended improvements. Um, I wanted to note that uh we are underway in kicking off that project as well to further evaluate those stations. So um the city's already taking care of those issues, or in the process of taking care of those issues. There was another pump station recommended um a couple of years back, I believe, called Stone Point Booster Station, so we, we tried to incorporate some of these other studies that have been done, you know, sprinkled through the last few years, and, and get all those projects evaluated and put in, in here as well, so we have a comprehensive list of projects. Stone Point was one of the, the ones that we incorporated from a previous study. When we look at water uh transmission, how to move water from one place to another, this, this green line is, well, back when they, when you guys designed it, was known as the Eureka Valley Water Transmission Main. Uh, we noticed in the model that there's really low flow through here, um, part of a result of planning for future growth that may not have occurred yet, part of a regu- of a result of maybe losing a, a user out there, the brewery. So um the city was already aware of the low flows in this line, it's important to keep uh water from going stagnant, you wanna keep that water quality good, so the city has already installed automatic flushers to keep the, the water fresh. Now, we just hope that at some point, you'll get some more usage out there uh so that it's less of a maintenance issue. So again, something we identified that's already being taken care of. This red line represents the northern transmission main, so essentially, it's, it's um the, the distribution model showed that there's a hard time to get water through town to the northwest pressure zone. The primary large trunk mains through here, through the middle town, are at capacity, so it's hard to push water over to that area. This red line represents um a project that the city's working on right now with another consultant to see how would we get better flow of water over to northwest pressure zone and probably become the primary method of doing so, rather than, right now, we're relying on a s- lot of smaller mains through town that, like I said, are uh at capacity, you have high velocities and high pressure losses. So again, the city is wa- aware of the issues over here and are working on that solution right now. When we looked at water storage, um, again, enough water uh storage to provide one day's worth of average demands, the one uh pressure zone that stood out is not. The one pressure zone that stood out is not have enough capacity is the northwest pressure zone. So this blue area. Now, when we, you know, we looked at these projects and we try to project out into the future. Again, this is subject to city staff review as to when these projects might actually occur. I wanted to point out, we're starting out in 2024. The reason we're at 2024 is because we're projecting out five-year increments. Our last full record of water usage when we started the project was 2019. So that was the base of our starting year. So if that looks a little goofy, that's why it's that way. Just wanted to point that out. So the first set of projects in 2024 would be construct Northwest Transmission Main. Again, that, that project's already being designed. And then add a million gallons of water storage to the northwest pressure zone. Looking out to 2029, another result of Randy had mentioned, you know, we were looking at, at one point in time, the city was looking at treatment down near the airport, looking at how to get water to and from, the transfer down here. You know, we did look at another route here that we, we don't have shown, but this, this dark blue, light blue and dark blue lines was the most efficient method that we found to get the water transferred down to Miller and Southwest Pressure Zone. Another result of 2029 shows that we will not have that one day's worth of storage in the Miller Pressure Zone. So again, 2029, add another water tower to provide storage in the Miller Pressure Zone. And then 2039, again, as the demands increase, the pressure zone usage increases. We identify another deficiency in storage. So there's one of two options at this point in time. Of course, when you get out that far, you'll probably revisit these. But either add storage to the higher pressure zone or add storage near the Blue Mont Tank. When we looked at where to put these, let me see if I can zoom this in. Where to put these water tanks? We, we looked at eight different locations. So we really wanted to look throughout the entire system, make sure we had the best locations identified. So again, the first tank would go up here, northwest pressure zone. The second tank would go down here, that Sunset, or sorry, Sunrise. The, the third tank would go to either G or site F, which, where, where's my site F? Or H, sorry, H or G, one of those two locations. So this is hard to read. It's easier to see in the report. There's a, there's a variety of tables there that shows the different projects and the costs. We've got, we've prepared cost estimates to help define the projects and program, program them into the CIP. We do, we did, let's say, we have a design horizon of 2029 for a storage facility. We did project out costs to $20, $29. So we looked at today's costs and we projected them out so that it's an accurate, hopefully accurate number at that point in time. Okay, sewer collection system. The goal here was to look at six different areas. So we do have a model or the city has a model they turned over to us to evaluate the sewer system. The idea wasn't to model the entire system. The city had an idea of some areas that we needed to look at. And so that's what we, we looked at. There's, there's either areas where there was perceived capacity issues or areas where there were, you know, no one programmed projects on a current CIP that the city wanted us to review in a little bit more detail. The first area is Fort Riley Boulevard. This is Chili's right here, over by the mall. The hatched out lines, there's kind of a mess of sewer lines and manholes that are within the highway. It makes it very difficult to access and to, you know, maintain. So the idea here is how to simplify that. So the green lines are how we would simplify it. So we put together a project to, to show that and put costs together on how to make that a little bit better situation. We also looked at a siphon. The siphons located right here. Kind of wanted to see if there's a way to get rid of it due to some odor issues. What we found is it's not feasible, looking at the elevations and everything in the area. We also looked at realignment of the, the US 24 sewer line in the Fort Riley Boulevard Sewer Main. So again, how, how to make the system a little simpler. This is a US 24 realignment. There are manholes in infrastructure underneath the railroad tracks. And so the idea was, you know, this isn't a priority project right now, but what to do, how to, how to come up with a feasible project so at some point in time, the city could make it a better situation and easier to maintain. Moving to Area B, there's a few, you got Seth's Child Boulevard and Fort Riley Boulevard. Sorry, Seth's Child Road and Fort Riley Boulevard. Just south of there, there's two areas that are, looked like they'd be pretty good for residential development. The city had concerns that perhaps there was capacity issues in these lines and just wanted to make sure that if they were approached by a developer, that we would know what would have to happen to serve those areas. The good news is we modeled these lines and they have enough capacity to serve these areas. Area C, this is, uh, these areas were brought to our attention or the city's attention by the chamber. There's, there's some desire to, to maybe attract light industry out by the airport. So we, we spent some time here to, to determine what would, what, what is the system's existing capacity to serve these two areas? And what might we have to upgrade in order to even serve more of these two areas? So example, for example, we know we can only serve so much flow. So that might be, and this is just for, don't hold me this, but, for example, you might cut this in half. We, we can only serve half of this now. To serve the rest of it, we know we'd have to up, upsize the Eureka Valley Lift Station and do some other improvements. So moving further down from that area, so the Eureka Valley Lift Station I just talked to you about. Further down, there's some trunk sewers that head to Wildcat Creek Lift Station. So they kind of loop around here. And we wanted to make sure there was, you know, there wasn't another bottleneck somewhere downstream. We did find there is a flat sewer line here that potentially could have some issues. So again, that's one we need to keep our eye on and, and see what we could do there for a relief sewer in order to support some growth near the airport. There is an aerial sewer line. So basically it's crossing a drainage channel instead of going underneath it. It's, it's exposed. It's always good to eliminate those, eliminate those if possible. And so we did look at a concept to do that as well. Tatarax Hills has a number of individual pump stations within the homes to pump the sewer, the wastewater into a sewer line. So twofold here is what do we do to eliminate maintenance on those pump stations? The city staff has to maintain those. And secondly, if there is other development to occur north of here, how can we support that development? So basically kill two birds with one stone, get rid of the, of the pump stations and come up with trunks or a sewer line that could serve other development at the same time. This isn't probably a high priority project, but again, one that the city had, had on its mind and wanted to look at and come up with some concepts for. And then finally, Area F, Aggieville. Olson had done a study a couple of years back on the development work in Aggieville and how to serve that area. And part of that study identified some sewer lines that would be over capacity at some point in time as that redevelopment occurs. It's not immediate, but it's something the city needs to plan on. It's not an easy area to, to work in. So again, we want to put some emphasis on that project as well. So all in all, there were four projects that we thought warranted inclusion in, in the CIP. So eliminate aerial crossing. I will point out on this US 24, 54-inch sanitary sewer realignment, we do, we did recommend some additional flow testing in that line. That's a big number. So before the city does anything there, there's a little bit more work that's out of scope that needs to occur. And I think the city's already in the works of getting flow meters.
Go ahead, I think you've got one more. Okay, so, so before we go on, I know there's a lot of information here, a lot of project sites. We got a lot more to talk about, but I look at these maps and I know these, I know these places by heart. I can look at sewer lines and water lines and I know exactly where everything's at, where the issues are. We go through a lot of information and I'm sure you have a lot of questions about these individual sites or projects. If you have any questions now, I'm, I'm more than happy to interject and provide more information, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew that. It's a lot of information, I understand, and I understand you're going to have lots of questions. So if you have anything till now, just let me know whether this is a good, good kind of stopping off point to, to maybe answer any questions you had on any of these projects.
It's not our wheelhouse. But I can tell it excites you. I was thinking about the, the, the city's business park out west of the airport.
Yes, Tech Park.
What do we call it now? Tech Park. But there's a new business there, Bev Hub, that I assume is using water. And, and so there'd be some, is that connect, is that part of the Eureka Valley part?
Yeah, so if you want to, we'll go back here.
You don't have to, I just, be sure.
So this, this map here is really talking about some of the, some of the studies that we did in relation to Eureka Valley Airport Tech Park area. And like Ben said, these are, these were inquiries from the Chamber of Commerce about, you know, hey, we've got a potential, you know, maybe we don't have a potential customer, but we want to know what this area is capable of. Can you handle this much water demand? Do you have enough if we discharge this much to the sewer? So that's what a lot of this, this particular site was about.
You've got a big tower right up on that hill there east of the airport.
Yeah, the Miller Ranch Tower.
Yeah.
And so, you know, what Ben was referring to on the water side is, is we built that Eureka Valley Water Transmission Main based on a, a need for fire demands in the tech park. We didn't, we weren't meeting fire demands.
Fire.
At the time, that system worked wonderfully and we had tall grass out there and they were using a lot of water. When they went out of business, that hurt us a lot as far as water demands, water age, turning that system over. And like Ben mentioned, we, we install automatic flushers that unfortunately it wastes a lot of water, but it's necessary in order to make sure that water is, is meeting standards. The new, the particularly new development that is there, yeah, they use water, but not a substantial amount of water, not like Tall Grass did.
All right.
So, you know, it, it would be a good thing to, to find heavy water users for this type of area. You know, preferably, you know, some that, you know, package it and send it somewhere and don't discharge it to the sewer. But, you know, there's other, other potential options out here. We had a, had a, you know, the, the business area east of the airport, Murray Edition. At one point, they were interested in coming on to city water. So we have potential customers out there that can use city water. We just have to wait for the right development group to come along and, and get that neighborhood together and come to us with a project to, to build that infrastructure. So there's definitely options there.
I have a very, really basic question. I know that our water sys, our wastewater system is, I don't know what to call it, but it's more organic or what's aerobic, if that's the right word. Okay. So what we're talking about, we're, will enhance that existing system and the delicate balance that takes place there?
That really depends on what kind of users that we attract to our city.
User.
So, so different industries will have a different impact on our wastewater treatment process. You certainly want to promote those type of businesses. But, but right now, our, our plan is a high performing plant. We have ample capacity both biologically and hydraulically. So really, those are, those are the kinds of things that we address with the facility plan.
Right.
Like I said, this is more about the collection of wastewater and distribution.
So this is not about anything to do with expanding the plant itself?
No, not necessarily.
Okay.
With the exception that if you eliminate groundwater infiltration, that'll help your biological process as well. And that's what we're going to talk about next is your CCTV and your rehab of your sanitary sewer lines.
Good segue, huh?
Well, except I have just one question. When you talk about a million more in, in a, in water tower type stuff, how, how much water does an average water tower we have hold?
So most of our elevated towers, at least the newer ones, Miller Ranch and Colbert Hills are half a million, or sorry, 500,000, yeah, 500,000 gallons. Sunset Zoo Tower is much larger. I believe it's one and a quarter, one and a half. The new, the new Blue Township Water Tower that we worked with, the Real Water District, it's a, I think it's a million.
It's a million.
It's a million gallons or 1.25. At one point, they were going to make it a one and a half million. I've got severe water tower envy with, with them. If they would have built Colbert Hills and Miller Ranch that same size with that same foresight, we wouldn't be talking about some of these projects. But tho- those are probably more typical, Seaco Ground Tank, it's, it's, it's gigantic. It's, it's 2 million gallons plus. So i- ideally, any new tower we build is going to be at least a million gallons.
I would have never thought of water tower envy. That's a good term.
So, so yeah, let's get into the next section. Oh, I'm sorry, another question?
Okay, so, so what I hear you saying is we need, in the future, we're going to need about three new towers, is that right?
In a 20-year horizon.
Yeah, and I liked how, I liked how you laid out each specifically in your larger document here. The area that has, that's by Grand Mir, the constant feedback we get is weak pressure. And is that what you're referring to as far as needing a bigger tower or something that holds more water? I don't know if it's the pipes or what it is that's makes it a weaker, weak pressure is what I consistently hear.
I, I would say the northwest zone in Colbert Hills is our most diverse pressure zone. One, it, we've got areas in the newer development that have 130 pounds. And then I would say the, the newest development up in the Hartford Hills area, very northwest or, you know, anywhere from 50 to 60 pounds of water pressure. All of those are very adequate or, or more than adequate to the point where we wouldn't, we would prefer not to have 130 or 140 pounds of pressure in our system. So I don't think we have a water pressure issue in the northwest zone. We just have a, an issue with not having enough storage because we, we have to fill that tank multiple times a day. Ideally, we'd fill it once. And ideally, we'd have enough storage out there to, to allow that tank to serve that area for an entire day. Like Ben mentioned, if, if, if we have something like a power outage and we can't pump water into it and our generators fail, we need to be able to make sure that there's water for that entire system for a day or more. And so that's what we're lacking right now is the inability to keep that tower full for an entire day. It's a, it's a constant cycling process or we're expending way too much energy to keep those towers full.
And my other question is, if the population is increasing, are, are we going to be building another fire station around that area? And I would assume that means water and everything else that goes with it.
That, that one is, again, that's kind of out of my wheelhouse, but I would defer to other, other city staff on a question like that. I mean, it's.
Well, they'll have the water when they hook up to the hydrant.
So no immediate plans. I mean, if we go east, we'll have to build another station. But Station 5 was located to be able to serve that area and that growth area that we have there.
Okay. And I would imagine the.
As well as the airport station.
The airport one, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. So Randy's.
I got, I got my mic on finally. I think, what, two weeks or, we had our retreat recently and we talked about opportunities to highlight energy efficiency, sustainability, whatever those words are that you want to use. And I think, just wanted to make note of more people and less water usage is something that I don't know that very many people in the community understand that we've had, and then you, you kind of went through that quickly and that's a, it's a huge deal. Water is such an important resource and if we're growing at the same time that we're using less, it's not just because, it's, it's due to design. It's due to efficiencies and intentions and you mentioned those things. And I think that just needed to be noted and filed out away in the, the energy efficiency file that you're going to present at Manhattan. in the, the energy efficiency file that you're going to present at Manhattan Bean, wonderful, energy-efficient place to come and open your business.
And, and just to note on that, you know, it's, that's a common trend throughout the nation. And, and we've talked about it in the past with our wastewater system, that winter quarter average has been going down, you know, our, our basis for assessing residential sewer users. So that's another indicator that, that there's much more water efficiency out there with appliances and plumbing. So it, it's something that, it's good for, like you said, energy efficiency, conservation of water. The one thing that we constantly have to do is, is adjust how we assess our water and sewer rates to account for that. Because that base consumption goes down, we have to make up for that somehow because our costs don't necessarily go down always.
And then I'll, I'll put a plug in for the next section of the presentation. If we can keep groundwater out of the sanitary sewer, then we're paying less to treat it, less to pump it as well. So yeah, this is a sinkhole that Randy sent me, I think he was real proud of it, but is a result of deteriorating sewer lines. And so this is where Nolan comes in, he had a lot of fun, spent about two weeks reviewing 40,000 millimeter foot of CCTV video inspection. So the city has 30% of their system televised right now. So what we did is we reviewed the, or Nolan reviewed the video. He recorded the defects that were discovered and he recommended some pipe rehab or replacement projects to help with INI and other maintenance issues that you might have.
I just wanna interject, these are, these are large lines, so trunk mains, interceptors, anything 15 inches or larger. We don't, we don't have the ability to do those in-house, so we have to hire those out for a contractor to go and review those. Anything smaller than that, we try to inspect, televise every four to five years. But these typically, these haven't ever been inspected in the life of the system, so we're the first ones doing it. So this is why this is an important item.
This is wastewater.
This is wastewater.
I'm gonna try to zoom in here as well. So what we did is prepared this map here that talked about different priorities of rehab or replacement. So you can see the red is a priority A, so top priority. So those would've been the lines that are in the worst condition or, you know, we viewed the most INI or infiltration inflow. And likewise, B is less important, still important, and C is, is the least priority. The next map is just a similar map showing priority C locations. So that's, that's the extent of what we've recommended for rehab or replacement. I also wanted to note, yeah, Randy mentioned these are large diameter lines. This blue represents what has already been inspected, again, 30% of the system. The red represents what needs to be inspected. And we've broken up the red, the, the to be inspected into different, two different projects. So basically, tried to, tried to make it so it's a more manageable project. And Randy's getting ready to hire somebody or get advertisements for bids for some of this work down in this area. So that's the feature inspection program. Again, these are the items that have been lumped together, different priorities. So similar type of work for rehab and replacement and the red is what needs to be televised. So after these are televised and Randy will have somebody review those or that data as well and make similar recommendations on what needs to be fixed. So again, we recommended splitting the CCTV video work into two groups. And then we've come up with three different priority projects. So the first one, this would be for rehab and replacement. First one would be one to two years out. Repair Project B is three to five years out and Repair Project C would be five to 10 years out. Now again, as we, as we project these out, city staff still has to review these and make sure it all fits into their budget and, and everything else. So these are just recommendations that they'll take to the next step once the, the report's finalized. Moving to the capital improvements program, we use the same priority ranking as what the city currently uses in your CIP. Priority one, most critical, priority five, least critical. Again, I mentioned that we projected costs out into the future. We use a E and R, Engineering News Report, indice to project out. This goes from, well, 1991 through, so almost 30 years of data that we use to project it out. Within the body of the CIP, we do have a verbal description of each project plus a summary of costs. And then we've, we've phased those out or we said, we have phase one, which is current projects. Phase two would be recommended to be done in the years 2023 through 2025. Phase three goes through 2030 and so forth. This is a clip from your existing CIP. I wanted to note that we did review the existing CIP with city staff and we've included any existing CIP projects or most of them, I should say, into our table and in our maps that summarizes the, the projects. And then we did prepare maps to show the location of these projects. The WA is a water project that came from the existing city CIP where we don't have a number like that assigned. Those were our recommended improvements. So again, you know, the water line one through 11, those were fire protection water lines, is that correct, Michelle?
Yes, those are all for fire protection.
We did the same thing for the sanitary sewer. So again, these would be recommended replacement or rehab projects. And then the WW numbers are what's already on the city's CIP. And what we came up with is a table to summarize all these projects. So kind of a snapshot of where to, where you can see everything at once. So again, the WA, those projects are existing water projects. And then these are the projects we've recommended. And the priority of those projects and what year out we feel might be appropriate to implement those projects. And again, this is just kind of a blow up. Hopefully, you'll have a chance to look at the report and, and get a better look at these tables. I think that's, oh, that's not it. Boy, it's a long presentation. The, the next piece is, this piece was done by Black and Beach. So this is the Valve Inspection, Exercising and Maintenance Program. I wanted to note the city, so KDHE requires the city have this program. The city had a SOP in place that we basically bolstered up quite a bit. So we, we wanted to actually identify how many valves they had and, and give a more guidance on how to keep track of their valve operation and exercising. And then we used it to determine if they were, if they need additional staff or equipment to, to exercise these valves. So 4,500 valves in the system, there's almost 400 that are classified as critical. So that means due to age or size, they're critical. If, if it's in a critical area near a hospital and you had a main break and you couldn't isolate, that's a critical valve. And, and so the idea is how do we maintain these valves so that they work every single time you need them? So just kind of a summary on the finding is we've, we've recommended that the city add two additional crews to exercise the valves throughout the year. And I, I believe those are two, two men crews. And the remaining work, again, we're gonna kick off this piece tomorrow. Black and Beach will lead this effort. In addition to just simply exercising valves, here's a list of typical activities or duties for the water department. And you can see there's quite a bit of a difference in variety, even removing snow, you know, putting up barricades, all kinds of stuff they have to do there. So what we're looking at is, is, is the department staffed appropriately for all these activities? And, you know, and do they have the right equipment? So we'll kick that off tomorrow. A lot of this can be rolled into the asset management program once, once the city decides to move forward with that. So in addition to, to looking at staffing and maintenance, we're gonna kind of set the stage for giving the city a lot of good information that you can use for your asset management program when that comes down the pipe. Okay, I think that's it. So yeah, other questions?
Those 27 valves that were checked.
Checked, so we knocked those off to 4,000, we have to check every five years. We got, those are good.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so right now, our, our valve exercising and maintenance program really is, is a kind of reactive, I guess. One of the, one of the main impetuses of KDHE's requirement was that we do a little bit better record keeping. That's what, okay, Ben mentioned asset management. And so we need to document a little bit better when we touch a valve and exercise it. The goal here is to become more proactive. So it's, it's a, it's kind of a buzz thing in, in the water industry, especially with KDHE right now. For, for many years, they, you know, they promoted it as good practice and we have an inspection every three years for our water system. And most recent inspection is basically, they, they made it mandatory. So, you know, we've always done a little bit, but we haven't really been as proactive as we needed to be. So every year, we, we go through and do valve operation for, you know, the many isolations we do for a project or for a main break, you know, we're working valves and it's almost inevitable, once a month or so, we'll find one that just won't operate. And so what that means is an isolation area might go from impacting a block's worth of people to five or six blocks. So that's the, that's the importance behind it. It just makes things a little simpler when we have to shut something down for an emergency. Just hope that one day it's not gonna be a very, very important line that all of a sudden that valve won't work and we end up with a boil water advisory or worse, an order or something like that.
These are infrastructure projects that cost a lot of money. I would really like some bargains. Are there ever sales? Which is a ridiculous question, but I, I, is there, there's no way to ever, well, just, keeps, you know, the north campus corridor is a big money hog. They, the, the infrastructure for water and sewer and the plants and are huge costs for us. And, you know, there's almost a limit to how much the public will pay. And so there's some balance and so this is just really adding to the to-do list and stressing the importance of doing it and not putting it off, you know? So I appreciate hearing this report. It's important that our community hears the report.
I, I mean, not that this task was easy, but there's still a hard part coming up. And that's particularly on the water side is making sure we got proper funding to do these projects. We've already got a big allotment of CIP projects before we did this study. And so we're, like I said, we're adding up to $42 million worth of additional projects that we gotta find a way to pay for. So, you know, we'll, we'll talk about that more this year as we come back for water fund updates, looking at rates and whatnot. So, you know, I mentioned one of the problems is we, we have a steadily declining demand. So we'll have to, we'll have to look at maybe correcting that. We're looking at, you know, an updated cost of services study probably within the next year or two to have a, to have a financial consultant help look at these CIP projects and, and are we, are we set in a good position to do them? Or do we have to defer for another five years? I don't like that option. It really depends on what the financial outlook looks like.
Well, we've had a consultant, two actually in a row, make recommendations about our, increasing our utility costs to pay for, and, and we were on like a five-year schedule, I think.
Yep.
Of 3% a year and I could be off, but that's generally it. So this just kind of blows that up totally. I mean, if we're, does that plan we've been on accommodate for some of these huge costs?
I think the biggest.
I guess that oughta be my question.
Yep. The biggest issue with the water fund recently has been underperforming sales and revenue generation. So we were short a million and a half a couple of years ago. We were short 1.2 million in 2020. A lot of that was weather dependent, but a lot of it is, is declining demands. One of the, one of the components of the, of the rate adjustment or the rate structure change that we did in 2015 was trying to become less reliant on the weather so that our, our base revenues were captured by base water consumption. And I will say, I think we missed the mark with that portion of it. They projected substantial growth continuing from 2015 and beyond and we know that that slowed down substantially with, we were going from 250 new connections a year down to 50, maybe 100 if we're lucky. Hopefully, we're seeing an uptick in that.
Yeah.
So, so the rate structure was set based on some pretty bad assumptions on growth. The other assumption was that water demands weren't gonna start dropping based on efficiency. We should've seen it coming because we saw it with the winter quarter average on the sewer side, so.
Every, you can't, you know, every appliance we buy is more efficient than the one we retired. And, I mean, there's, you know, our vehicles are supposed to be more efficient and so those are important signals too. And I know how easy it is to not be able to read the tea leaves exactly.
Sure. Two years ago, we talked about a general correction with the rates on the wastewater side. We saw that, that the study was wrong then, on the wastewater side, we made a correction. And the wastewater funds performing great. And I think it's just be, we, we were willing to make that correction to generate the adequate revenues. We're probably gonna have to make that same decision on the water side this year or next year. Fortunately, right now, demands are looking pretty good, I think, at least the past month.
Yeah.
Been hot though.
Good.
So I think, you know, some of the points that Commissioner Morris brought up as well as you, our population has kind of leveled off for, for a little bit here. I don't see it growing, at least for another three to five years. And with the reduction of water use, unless people start watering their yards again and there's more people playing golf and they're watering their golf courses and such, that's the only place where I can see an increase. Our maintenance and everything else does not reduce simply because the water usage has reduced. So I think that's where some of this buildup is coming from. At the federal level, they're discussing the infrastructure funds and the infrastructure bill. Do you see any kind of funding mechanisms for us to apply for those types of grants? I'm sure we are not the only community that has these types of problems with water and the infrastructure that's necessary to maintain as well as keep up with the standards.
Well, Ben might know more about, he might keep a closer eye on that. I know you deal a lot more with the wa- wastewater side, but you see it a lot more regionally. But the, the, the things that we're seeing or we're anticipating is that those funds are gonna be, I think, more on the green side of infrastructure or, or we do have one project where it's, it's permit or bringing a, a existing facility into compliance because it, it's not necessarily meeting compliance standards right now. It's our, our limes, slugs, lubeons on the water plant side. So those are the kinds of projects. One, it's close to being shovel-ready. Two, it's, it's correcting a, maybe a slight environmental issue. So we think that's a good project to, to, to look at for those funds when we really find out how we're gonna be allowed to use those or what, what projects we can apply for. When it comes to system capacity and demands and growth, I, I don't know if that's gonna be the focus of those funds. And, and plus, you know, I don't anticipate those funds being available for many, many years. A lot of these projects are gonna be five years and beyond. You know, one can hope, I don't know, do you have any?
No, I would anticipate the sewer rehab projects as being considered green. So there's, there's probably a few, we, we just need to look into it and see exactly. We'd need a visit with KDHE, I'm assuming it'd come through the state. A lot of those typically come through the state. So we'll be talking to the regulators a little bit to learn more about the funding.
Right, especially if they're also looking at vulnerable areas in communities where the infrastructure is old and so you need to bring it up to, up to par.
Randy, we, we continue to see funding at the state level for the KDHE low-interest loans though, correct?
Yeah, yeah. We've had no issues obtaining low-interest loans from the state. There's, there's headaches that come with that. I don't wanna say headaches, but it's, it's.
Administrative challenges.
Jump through. As you can imagine, with, you know, those are federal dollars, so there's federal hoops you gotta jump through. But, but the interest rates are very, very low. And, you know, they have 20-year and 40-year options. We don't typically look at a 40-year option for those, but, you know, our bond, bond rates are also very, very low right now. So financing projects isn't really an issue unless we, you know, we, we look at overdoing it. But it's, I, I think the, the picture. But it's, I, I think the, the picture, the financial picture in the future as far as being able to finance some of these projects is pretty good.
Yeah, and also with the Flint Hills Regional Council and some of these areas such as where Bev Hub is right now or some, if we can kind of collaborate with some of our other partners, maybe we can, um, share the, share the cost with a bigger goal in mind for all of us as far as the water needs in our, in our regional area. So, I think, you know, it, it's a, it's a massive manuscript you all gave us. Thank you for your hard work. I feel really good that we have such young, talented individuals doing this kind of work. Uh, there's, it's very detailed down to the exact roads and why we need it and everything. So, it makes sense when I look at it to visualize where it is in my community and I really do appreciate all of the work that went to it. And I hope we do utilize it and, um, try to upgrade everything because we know when we don't upgrade, our community feels the consequences in a very bad way. Right now, we are very fortunate where we take our water for granted and we wanna keep that up, but that takes a cost to it at, at the same time. So, thank you for all of this and I'm sure we'll have plenty of discussions about funding in the future.
Yeah, I, I admit I didn't read all three hundred and twenty-seven pages and so, um, the thing that, uh, when I first heard about the fact that I think it's the Wildcat Creek Lift Station, that pretty much pumps all sewage from the west side of Manhattan. When, since I heard that, it's like, if that thing craps out, so to speak, uh, what, what, uh, what is, what is the backup plan? You, you gotta, you put a tractor and a pump in there and, and make it work for a while or something? Uh, that, that idea that half of the town almost sewers could go out when a some, when a pump station stops working, um, that makes me terrifically nervous and I, I suppose you got, somebody, yeah, your risk people have, have figured out a, a backup plan, I suspect.
There's some redundancy built into that station. It's, it's got its own backup power generator. Uh, Ben knows firsthand, he...
Those are new.
Yeah, he, he helped design, you know, the Western Interceptor project, which is a large force main that, that, uh, goes south of town, uh, that helped increase the capacity of that station. Also, we, we've been through significant projects in the past ten years to upgrade all the pumps there. Uh, but we're, we've, we're fortunate. We got good maintenance staff and, and they, they've, have done a good job of coming up with, with, uh, improvement projects for sites like those. They, they understand how critical they are and, and, you know, right now, we're, we're dealing with issues with a, with a pump. It's just, it's given us fits and so we're, we're constantly investing in it, making sure it's ready to go. But, um, you, you, that, you mentioned that site and it's, you know, it happens to be situated right in an area where it's next to a very dangerous, you know, creek that floods quite a bit. And, you know, we're, we're happy to see that bridge project happening because, you know, we're gonna be the first ones that would be impacted if, if the water hits that bridge and starts backing up anymore. So, we've got some redundancy built in and some safety factor, but, but you're right, that, those are, those are critical pinch points in our system, but...
There's plenty, plenty of other people are losing sleep over it too.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, and that's one of those things where, um, if we ever have an issue, it's unfortunate. We're gonna end up with a, with a overflow event directly in the Wildcat Creek. You know, the only, those things happen. They, they happen all over. Um, the only thing that, that you wanna make sure you're doing is it's not because of negligence or we haven't done our part to maintain it. You know, the state will typically understand if, if you have a natural disaster and, and that caused a failure. But if you've neglected it, they're not gonna be so kind. We haven't neglected it. But, you know, things like that are the things we think of all the time.
Okay, pretty comprehensive report, you know, hundreds of, hundreds of pages. And of course, my, my thoughts on this is, of course, this has to be the priority. When you look at what a city does, you know, this type of infrastructure, you can't run a city without it. So, it, it, it's top of my list on something that we, we have to take care of. And, and that, while this is gonna, these are gonna be expensive projects, I think you, you emphasized a point I've been trying to make for a couple of years, which is, uh, leave the enterprise funds alone, you know, so that whatever revenue you generate stays right there with the water department so it can help fund it. And we just passed an economic development tax so we can do some long-term, you know, planning. And clearly, you know, if you don't have infrastructure, you're not gonna do any economic development if you don't have water, sewer and all those things taken care of. So, I, so I really like the fact that this is laid out for several years and it, it's in pieces. And I think we can, we can make the funding happen and this has gotta be a priority on funding. I think everybody in the city's pretty happy with their sewer and water. Why? Because it works. And when we have, you know, little minor disasters like the sinkhole caused by the sewer failing or three water main breaks on the same day and we have to shut things down, it starts getting everybody thinking, wow, you know, what would happen if we weren't doing a good job maintaining? So, I think we've gotta continue because we've got a pretty good reputation right now. We need to keep it that way. So, appreciate all the effort, uh, put into this study. Is there any public comments on this issue? Okay, this is not an item that we're gonna vote on, so at this point, you know, thank you for attending and we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.